Okay, welcome to the Selectment Meeting on April 6, 2015. Please join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Public announcements, I have, we have a couple and some of the members do also. This is an announcement by the Abington Historical Commission. The Abington Historical Commission takes great pride in preserving Abington's history as part of our ongoing mission. To that end, we have designated three worthy places of honor here in Abington. They are Loud's Corner, Howard's Corner, and the Mustafields. The Mustafield sign and Loud's Corner signs were installed in the fall. The Howard's Corner sign will be installed in late spring due to the unexpected old man's winter fury. The three signs were produced by mass signs, I didn't write it, were produced by mass signs of Rockland. So I'm sure everybody in this room knows where Loud's Corner, Howard's Corner, and the Mustafields are, so when you drive by, take a look at the signs, they're actually very nicely done. Next announcement starting down the end. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Abbott Education Foundation hosts Derby Night at the Races Friday evening, May 1, 2015, 7 to 10 at the Knights of Columbus. Enjoy Night at the Races while supporting Abbott Education Foundation. Cost is $20 per ticket, includes funny money. Think we have some of that around here. Prizes for the best derby attire contests, bring your own snacks, cash bar, dessert table, and a 50-50 raffle. Each race features commentary by professional racetrack announcers, plus a full graphic and commentary announcing the results of each race. Please note that this is a 21 event, 21 years of age event. To reserve a table of 10, please email Abbott Education Foundation at gmail dot com. And just one other thing, Saturday they had a, anything with a plug pickup at the town bond, and I just want to comment, compliment the Sage Committee for, it was an outstanding job, I don't know if anybody happened to get on there, I did a couple times, and it was a win-win situation, the residents, they lined up, it was very well-run, it was orderly, they picked up donations for the Abbott Food Pantry, which certainly exceeded their expectations. It was just a great event for the town, so my hat's off to them, the members of the Sage Committee, I'd just like to thank them.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The announcement I have today is with regard to the Hug Foundation hosts Boston Marathon fundraiser. That's going to take place on Saturday, April 18, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at J.P. Ryan's Tavern, 246 Brockton Avenue, Abington. The Hug Foundation, if you don't know, the Hug Foundation along with J.P. Ryan's Tavern will be hosting a fundraiser for Nicole Jacobs to help her reach her goal of $7,900 in her Boston Marathon run for Dana Farber Cancer Center. Food, drink, raffles, silent auction, and celebrity friends. Come out and support this great cause, it's $10 at the door. Nicole's a reporter for WBZ-TV, and this will be her third marathon run, and for more information, you can visit the Hug Foundation website at www.hugfoundationma.org. Thank you.
You.
I have a couple. Registrations for the Abington Youth Football and Cheer will be held on April 8 and April 16 at the Abington Town Hall from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Please bring copies of birth certificates as well as registration fee, volunteer, and uniform check. AYF will be also accepting coaching applications for both football and cheer at these registrations. And also, the Abington Youth Soccer Program in partnership with the Challenger Sports is excited to provide a fun and educational soccer clinic in the months of May and June. Mastering footwork and learning new skills or just learning to improve upon what you already know, all levels are welcome, you can register at abbingtonsoccer.com.
Thank you, Tom. Burbine?
The Board of Health will be hosting the rabies clinic at Town Hall on April 18 from 10 o'clock a.m. until 12 o'clock p.m. The fee is $10 for a dog, $10 for a cat, and also at that same time, the town clerk's office will be open for registration and licenses, so that is April 18, 10 o'clock until 12 o'clock for the rabies clinic.
Thank you. I have a couple announcements, a little bit longer. Save the date. Abington's Flag Day Celebration, a new tradition that a group of us are going to try to start. Abingtonians will be gathering at Island Grove on Flag Day Weekend to kick off the summer with a town celebration. Be sure to mark your calendars now for Abington's Flag Day Celebration, scheduled for the week of June 12 through the 14th. An organization meeting was recently held, and here are some of the amazing events in the works. Friday, July 12, Civil War encampment, which will be held at Island Grove. Saturday, June 13, encampment activities throughout the day, and unveiling of the restored monuments of the Abolitionist Stone with a guest, featured speaker, musical accompaniment by the Abington Town Choir. Saturday evening will feature a campfire and candlelight tour of the encampment, and the bridge will be illuminated by luminary, which are basically just red gujarts filled with lights. Okay. Sunday, June 14, the encampment will begin, there'll be a family picnic poolside, and at the point, and various games and attractions. The Abington Lions will be selling their famous hot dogs and strawberry shortcake, and there will be a concert or two or three which are being planned right now. So that promises to be a fun weekend, and we hope to make it a yearly event. Abington Lions 60th Anniversary Gala, this is an event that is near and dear to my heart. Saturday, April 25, the Lions at Emerald Hall, the Lions will be celebrating 60 years of serving the community. We celebrate each of our six decades through music, and we will probably honor six different partners in service for the support of our club and the community, all local couples will be honored. If you would like a ticket, please contact myself or any other Lion, and we really want to have a good time, and I promise that it will be a good time. So thank you very much for honoring, for letting us do these announcements. Let's skip down to approval of the March 23, 2015, open session minutes, if we could, please.
Will they be approved?
A second. I think that Tom was not present, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, just want to make sure we get that. Motion's made in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Okay. Minutes of March 23. Approval of Memorial Day Parade, May 25, 2015. We have a request from Jeanne Ladoo for the yearly parade that starts at Beaverbrook School and Washington Street, Wall Memorial, and goes down Washington Street into the cemetery, so Mount Vernon Cemetery.
Will we approve the Memorial Day Parade for May 25, 2015?
Second that?
Motion's made in a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Approval of St. Bridget's School Road Race, now this is definitely planning early, October 17, it's very good, I know that they had one last year, it was a great success.
That's a good time.
I would know, but.
Will we approve the road race for October 17, 2015?
A second.
Motion's made in a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm Kelly Kennedy, I'm part of the safety committee.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I thought you, you know, you went past with no problems at all, but.
That's fine with me, too, I just wanted to say hello and thank you if you guys had any questions. Last year we did have about 400 runners, and everything went very well, and I've been in touch with Chief Majewski and Chief Nadal, and they're on board, and will take care of all the safety measures.
Same route as last year.
Same route, yep, similar to the partners that.
This is to benefit the students at St. Bridget's.
That's right, yeah, all goes back into their curriculum needs.
Excellent. Any other questions for Ms. Kennedy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't ignoring you, I was on a roll, so I guess I'll stop after this next one. Approval of Abington Little League Opening Day Parade, anybody from Little League want to talk? Okay, good. Little League Parade on Saturday, April 25, beginning at 11 o'clock. Starts at the police station down Central Street, up to Plummer Street into the Plummer Street Field.
Make the motion to approve.
A second. In a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, all right. We have, I'm going to take a little time out here, and I'm going to read a proclamation, as most of us in the room are aware, this is Mr. Dion's final meeting on the Abington Board of Selectmen, so we would like to honor him with this plaque, a proclamation for Thomas J. Dion III, April 6, 2015. Whereas Tom Dion has served the town of Abington in many capacities for over three decades, wow, whereas Tom Dion has served in the Finance, on the Finance Committee from 1985 to 1988, whereas Tom Dion was elected to the Abington School Committee from 1993 to 1999, whereas Tom Dion was elected to the Board of Assessors from 2002 to 2008, whereas Tom Dion was elected to the Board of Selectmen from 2012 to 2015, whereas Tom Dion has devoted many hours and evenings attending meetings and speaking with residents always concerned with the issues facing the town, whereas Tom Dion has demonstrated his commitment to his community repeatedly with his involvement in Abington Sports with Abington Youth Baseball, sorry, Basketball, Baseball and Soccer as a coach, referee, umpire, and director, the South Shore Eagles Youth Hockey as treasurer, with the Abington Greenway Football as public address announcer, and Abington High School Hockey as cable TV play-by-play announcer, whereas Tom Dion has also been a parent volunteer with the Abington Boy Scouts and a communicant and usher with St. Bridget's Parish. Now therefore, we, the Abington Board of Selectmen on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognize Thomas J. Dion for his many commitments to the town, giving of his time and talent so generously. His dedication, hard work, and commitment are acknowledged by the town of Abington with pride. Signed, Board of Selectmen Kenneth Coyle, R. Andrew Burbine, Maureen Jansen, Michael J. Franny. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know that Mr. Franny wanted to say a few words, so he'll try to be funny, but. You ready, Newman?
No, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. First off, none of us could do some of the things we do for the town without the support of our families, and his wife Patty, his son Christopher, and Michael, and Thomas, Tommy and Andrew are not here tonight, but I certainly want to thank you guys for all the help and support, because most of the time, we know it was you Patty that made these decisions, not Tom. And I'd also like to say that. I'd also like to comment on the list of things that Tom was able to do for the town, and I want to say that he did them extremely well, all except for the umpiring part. But, no, Tom is, I've known for a lot of years, and we're back on the school committee, and Tom was a person that actually, we're dating ourselves, that pushed to have the computer labs in the junior high school at the time, they didn't have computers, and Tom was the one that organized it and worked very hard, taught me how to lobby the Finance Committee, and we got a lot done on the school committee. But he was always a person, or is always a person, that stepped up, he's a doer, not a sayer, and that's proven in a number of things he did, so I'd like to thank you very much.
I don't know if anybody else wants to say some kind words, or maybe even some not-so-kind words for Tom, the microphone's open. Tom, would you like to say anything?
I would, Mr. Chairman, I would really, I'm humbled, I would like to thank the committee, the community for this acknowledgement of service. I'm sure a lot of people are asking why I elected not to seek reelection, it was a very, very tough decision, but as I've told people, my company was sold last July, I've worked for RS Means, will be 25 years in May of this coming year, and the company that bought us, great company, very growth-oriented, and I just feel that I need to, and I would like to participate in their growth plans, and feel like I need to reinvent myself a little bit, and requires a lot more work, that I found myself, it was a bit of a struggle to serve on both committees. But for those of you who believe a politician, the real reason is, I need the job. And my wife says, you need a salary. But I will say that I sincerely have enjoyed working on all the boards, but in particular, this committee, you know, going from my left Kenny, I've known Kenny for a while, but little-known fact that, you know, Kenny has been involved in a lot of things in town, from Finance Committee to SUA, to the Board of Health, and now the Board of Selectmen and Leadership Positions, and certainly he's a driving member of the Lions Club. Andy and I have worked on several campaigns, and worked against each other on a campaign, but Andy again has a great resume from, again, Finance Committee, School Committee, he was the moderator in town, also trustee at the Massachusetts, excuse me, Massasoit Community College, and also just a key contributor on the board. Maureen is a bit of a rose between two thorns, more in this direction than this one, but I've always been impressed with Maureen, because I think you served, I always get it wrong, but six or seven years on the Finance Committee, but I think five as chairperson, which shows a lot, and she certainly has a great understanding of the finances of the town. And my good friend Mike Franny, who I know quite well, he can go on with a list of things that he's done, but frankly, if you miss some, he'd still claim, you know, credit for it. But one thing I would like to just compliment, and Mike and I go back, but one of the things, Mike, is I do appreciate, Mike is a veteran, but he's a combat veteran of Vietnam, and I really appreciate that, I think that's been one of the most significant accomplishments. I also would just like to acknowledge, I see another Vietnam combat veteran, Jack Murphy, Purple Heart recipient, he's also very special to me. I can't really go on without thanking, as Mike did, my family, my wife Patty, my first wife of 33 years in May, and only wife, but my kids Chris and Michael who are here, and Andrew who's back at school, and Tommy who's working tonight. I would like to say I enjoyed working with our town manager, Rick Dory, all the members of the management team here, it's been outstanding, and I would like to thank all my friends for showing up tonight, it's very special to me. In closing, I would like to thank the residents of the town for giving them the opportunity to serve for the last three years for the town. It's been a privilege to serve the town, and with the many good friendships that certainly I have forged, and the memory, very many good memories that I will take away from my years of service in the town, so thank you very much. I would like to say I thought it was a very special honor to see Congressman Lynch come down to celebrate this, as a one-room selectman in the town of Abington.
I can see we caught you by complete surprise, you had no prepared statements, so. Normally, at this point, we'd take a little break and let you guys file out, however, I do not want Congressman Lynch to get a complex, okay? So if you could just hold tight for a little while, I'm sure this is going to be exciting for all of us. I'd like to introduce Congressman Steve Lynch, if you'd like to come and give us a Washington update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board of Selectmen, and especially Tom, I'll save my remarks regarding Tom. I originally planned, they've been keeping us in Washington, probably to everyone's benefit, I think, for weeks now, but we got a chance, they let us go for Easter break for a week, and I thought it would be a good time to come down and just give a brief update on what's been going on in Washington, and in some cases, what's not been going on. We have, you know, it's a new Congress in this session, in this current session, the Republican majority is as great as it's been since Herbert Hoover was president, they have, the Republicans in the House have about 50 more members, they also have control of the Senate, so it puts a premium on the ability to actually work across the aisle with your colleagues on the other side of the aisle, and trying to get some things done, and amazingly enough, we've had some success in the first few weeks of session. Congress recently concluded a cooperative funding bill for rail, Amtrak mostly, but for passenger rail across the country. That was a bipartisan bill, I think there were over 300 members of both sides of the aisle who supported that bill. We are negotiating a Trans-Pacific Partnership Bill, it's a trade bill, it's having some difficulty, but not because of the process in Congress, but actually, the details of negotiation, some parties feel that it may damage our sovereignty. It allows, this Trans-Pacific Partnership Bill allows private companies to challenge laws that the United States has adopted to protect the environment, to protect workers in our country, and to protect certain trade practices and intellectual property, so we're going back and forth with that right now. We're also, we just concluded a bill on the so-called SGR, a Doc Fix. Each year, there's a recurring gap in the funding for doctors for when anyone receives care through Medicare or Medicaid, and each year, we go to the precipice of a, it varies, but a 25 to 30 percent cut in doctors' fees, which usually causes great concerns in the hospital community and private practitioners. This year, amazingly enough, Speaker Boehner and Leader Pelosi got together with members of the Senate and actually worked out a compromise, so that they've revamped that whole system that will really protect seniors especially, in being treated under Medicare, to allow them to see their own doctors, and to not have doctors say that the reimbursement rates are so low that we won't care for seniors, so that was a strong victory. We're also, also, about six weeks ago, I was appointed as the top Democrat on the Task Force on Terrorist Financing, and I've been working on that issue for quite a few years, and basically what it does, it tries to deny access to our banking system to those who would use it for terrorist means. We've been able to get a lot of foreign countries to adopt our standards of anti-money laundering, and also, it's a protocol called Know Your Customer, so that we have verification, so that terrorists can't use the legitimate banking system. There's a bill pending right now on transportation, and it seems as though we may be at a point where we'll actually get a five or a six-year transportation bill passed. In the past, they've been doing one-year bills for transportation, which any project of any size, major transportation project of any size, usually takes three to four years at a minimum, and so obviously, a one-year transportation bill does not help any of the mayors or town managers who might have to grapple with a major construction project, nor would it help the governors across the country. So a six-year bill actually gives some predictability to the process, so that governors and state legislators can actually look forward and have a predictable revenue stream in order to accomplish a lot of these projects, so that's a, that's a good development as well. Lastly, what I'd like to do is to just recognize Tom, I think I have a couple of things, Shayna?
I was just kidding.
One of the nice things I get to do is special congressional recognition, and I know that Tom's service, I think in all the positions that you've held, probably over 30 years, would that be correct?
Oh, yes.
And so I should be here with a brand-new pickup truck for you, something that was, you know, commensurate with your service to the town of Abington, but I do have, I do have a U.S. House of Representatives certificate of special congressional recognition, presented to Tom Dion in recognition of 30 years of service and dedication to the town of Abington and to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, offered April 6, 2015, Stephen F. Lynch, Member of Congress. And along with that, I got these really cool cufflinks. These are congressional cufflinks, they're blue, my, one of my favorite colors, but I'll tell you, I just want to say on behalf of the people of Abington, sometimes, serving as a member of the Board of Selectmen, or any of the other positions that you've held over the years, is a thankless, thankless job. I always, I have a soft spot in my heart from my local delegation, not only in Abington, but I have 22 towns, and I've got three cities, and, you know, I get to fly off to Washington, you know, a couple, for three or four days a week, and deal with things down there, but at the local level, you're at the local level, and you can't get away from it, and sometimes, when you consider what the reward is, or the stipend might be for your service, and the sacrifice that you make with your families, and the time that you spend on very important issues that affect the daily lives of the people that you represent, the thanks are not commensurate with the service. So I just want to make sure you understand that you do have our thanks, you do have our deep appreciation for all your dedication, all your service, and also the sacrifice of your family as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman.
Oh, no, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Thanks, Count.
I will take a short little break, if people want to congratulate Tom, and give them other gifts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm doing all right, how are you?
Hi there.
Good, how are you? Nice to meet you.
Are you doing all right?
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're back, that was actually very nicely done, so congratulations, Tom. Next on the agenda, we're just going to talk briefly about, we've been updating our policies, and the next policies we'd like to update are our financial policies, and our policy on policies, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Procedures and procedures.
Jealous.
Okay, so if you guys can just take a look at those, and at the next meeting, we'll discuss them, everybody except for Tom.
I'll come back for morals.
You can still give us your opinion.
Yeah, that's right.
Next on the agenda, Tom Manager's Report.
That's more efficient than I'm used to, Mr..
I'm sure.
Wow, we buzzed right through this, too.
I believe there's a big basketball game on tonight that we have to get to, and the Red Sox won, by the way.
That's because Mr. Lester wasn't pitching for him this week.
Anyway, first, the budget process, as you know, continues, the last meeting that the Finance Committee has, the Water Department, actually, this coming Wednesday. As we've discussed before, there are a number of outstanding issues, the snow deficit is approximately $800,000, and some of those bills continue to trickle in, but most of it is known at this point. There's also a number of efforts underway, as I think Congressman mentioned to a number of you during the break, to try to get additional federal aid here, and throughout the Northeast for some of these snow over expenditures. That's something which, obviously, we can't count on, but something we're hoping that comes through. This week, we should have a handle on what our health insurance rates are going to look like, as well as, as you know, following, with bated breath, the state aid process. So hopefully, within two weeks, we will have a pretty decent idea as to what this pie is going to look like next year, and be able to provide some plausible solutions for town meeting, with enough time to, everybody to have something to say about it. So that's the budget process to date. The second thing I want to point out is that the drafts of the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants should be available, at least for distribution to the board by the end of the week, at least in draft form for now. Obviously, those will be scheduled for an appropriate agenda for your approval. As of right now, they've been recirculated to all the department heads for a final review on their part. Griffin's Dairy, those of you who have been in town today may have seen that the barn has today started to come down, we expect that the house may be as early as tomorrow, and obviously, there'll be a lot of cleanup work by the contractor after that to get the site into the condition that the contract requires, so I know for a lot of people, that's good news, for a lot of people, that's emotional news, so there's a number of people, public officials, and I just mentioned Wayne Nolling, who's been interacting with the family to keep them updated on, just for their own benefit, to be sensitive to that, so. As everybody is aware, we are having, the planning board has been trying to have a Route 18 update from the state, that has now been scheduled for May 4. We had tried to combine that with a first, with an opportunity to have a discussion with some of the business owners as far as the goal to set up an association or a roundtable, I don't want to be the, coin the phrase, I think that's something that hopefully they'll do by themselves eventually. So. So, that meeting is set up for May 4 at 6:00 PM, and what I would certainly work with the Chairman of the Planning Board to make sure that we have ample opportunity, hopefully at the beginning of that meeting, to have some statement from the appropriate people, and to try to solicit the input and support of that group. Again, infancy, but baby steps of what it takes to get it forward. I think that's the only thing I want to mention, other than, I do want to congratulate Dory for successfully completing her certified bachelor training program. It has been a burden. I will say that it seemed like the MBTA did coincide with Dory's personal needs, so we want to thank, a lot of people have Dory to thank for that, but I think she's done now. It's been a little bit of a burden on the office, more of a burden on Dory over the last several months, so, good for you, and that means we're going to put an awful lot of work on her that she hasn't seen before, she just doesn't know it yet, so.
So, who will be the town's Chief Procurement Officer?
Well, that is still me.
Oh, okay.
Pursuant to Chata.
Okay.
But Dory, as well as the town accountant, have achieved that certification, and I believe Mr. Stone in the Sewer Department have achieved that certification, so. Takes a lot, a lot of time and energy, and they even test you many times, so it's not just show up and accrue accountability, so.
Okay.
The only thing I could add is, Tom, I want to congratulate you, too. I know we've had a nice relationship the last almost two years, and by extension, no offense, I get paid well. I don't know why any of you put in the time and energy that you do, not just on the Boards of Selectmen, but Finance Committees, and especially these permitting authorities that have to deal with friends and neighbors, and, you know, in a very intimate way. So, congratulations to you, and again, by extension, to all of you who volunteer for the town.
Thank you.
Let's see, public comment. Ed, nothing?
I was just going to ask, with regard to the elections coming up, do you happen to know when absentee ballots or anything are available? Is there?
I think they are available now.
Are they available now?
My understanding is, yes.
Okay, I was just actually trying to get on the site to get that information out, so I'm sure it's on there somewhere, so.
We will double-check tomorrow that that's prominent on the website, just in case.
Okay. Great.
And you folks are going to update us at a future meeting soon about the website?
Yes.
Yeah, Mike and I had a little pre-meeting, and I'll put our thoughts together amongst us, and.
Yeah, I did talk to our IT person, he's on board with a lot of the things we're going to suggest, but Maureen's got a lot of good ideas, and we're just going to put it in the format. One of the things we did discuss is, this is going to be an ongoing, you know, we'll work for some time, bring it up periodically, but Rick actually had a gentleman from Carver call up and commended him on our website, so, you know, some of the changes we have made recently.
You might know Mr. Clarone Clark, who's been on the board for several years, he was just looking for some information, and, I mean, it's a work in progress, but like anything, it's always a matter compared to what, so.
Good.
It was nice to hear, but that doesn't take you off the hook, though, from all the other.
And even we were saying, when we met, like, because we sat down and like, started searching for things, and sometimes, we were pleasantly surprised at the things that we could find, so we don't in any way seem to, you know, we don't want to present that it's a bad website or anything, that just, we just would like to make sure that there's consistency in the things that, you know, not only we are looking for, but the residents are looking for, anything that can take the burden off of the employees in Town Hall, if they're willing to get that on, so we'll follow back.
She knows, she knows how bad I am with the computer, so she'd say, here, see if you can find this, and if I could find it, she'd say, okay, good.
Check.
He knows what he's looking for, at least.
But no, so we'll get back to you on that, so, thank you.
Okay, you do everything?
No.
Tom, leave you the last word, so before you talk, I'd like to commend you, too, and it's been an honor serving with you, and even, I've always admired you, especially at town meeting, you seem to get up and always, you know, speak your mind, and always have a lot of great things to say, so even way back then, when you were doing that, and hopefully, you'll keep doing that and stay involved, so it's been a pleasure serving with you.
Again, I appreciate this night, it's been very special to me personally, so, I mean, I can't say enough. I've enjoyed working with you, I could probably go on and wax on about things that we've enjoyed, you know, in working campaigns and working on committees together, but it was a very tough decision, but I didn't make that value judgment, and I think it's time to, you know, concentrate on my job.
Take a break, doesn't mean you have to stay away, right? Doesn't mean you have to stay away.
So, my only last word is just a reminder that one of the committees I do serve on is the Plymouth County Advisory Committee, so you need to appoint somebody. It's typically two meetings a year, typically May, June, where you go down and approve their budget, I think Gavin has got 2.61 percent of the overall vote of all the towns of Plymouth County, and much like us, I think they have a kind of special meeting sometime around Christmas or whatever, so, you need to appoint somebody.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to note that it's also Bob Manning, he's on the Board of Health, and he served a couple of terms at his last meeting tonight, too, so kudos to Bob for his hard work, and he got a plant.
Did he?
Yeah, he got a plant as a gift, and what did you get?
Should I, should I go in and show?[1338.01][1338.01](Laughter).
It was well worth it for years.
Nice cufflinks, they chuckles.
I think you should give him one.[1344.58][1344.58](Laughter).
One for each year, right?
I think some people actually want to use this room, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Hey, can I say?[1357.58]